The Paramount City Council meeting is now called to order. May I have roll call of council members, please?
Councilmember Gillan. Councilmember Hanson.
Here.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer.
Here.
Vice Mayor Martinez.
Here.
Mayor Lemmons.
At this time, we will excuse Mayor Lemmons. Consent calendar.
Move the item. Second.
Excuse me, Madam Vice Mayor, we do have public comments.
Okay. At this time, we will take public comments.
Yes, Madam Vice Mayor, we have a number of public comments for item number four, I believe is what it is, excuse me. And we do have some for general public comments. So, for those of you wishing to speak on item number four, I’m sorry, item number three, three, we will call you up when that time arises as indicated in your comment card. As far as the general comments go, we have, our first speaker is Mr. Renewal, Reno Redula, who would like to speak in general. Mr. Redula, please come on.
Good evening to everyone.
Good evening.
I just saw one, I just come here just to remind all that the role of law must be respected and applied mainly for the common good and equality to all politicians and residents of Paramount on the basis of democracy. Based on existing California Senate Bill Number 415, Chapter 235, which is signed by the Governor, that requires state, county, municipal, district, and the school district elections be held on the established election date, statewide election date, to be consolidated with statewide election. Those who violate this must face a lawsuit before the Superior Court by even mere resident of Paramount. I therefore oppose and firmly do not believe that extending the city election in Paramount must be beneficial and in the best interest of the residents. Especially for years, residents are facing the mounting task of getting rid of this gross polluter facilities that until now, day after day, spewing deadly toxins, mainly hexavalent chromium 6, that cause cancer illness. Until today, these polluters are enjoying, protected, under the status quo of our beloved politicians. Therefore, I urge the council to keep going and hold the next November election as mandated by the state law, to simply enjoy, to simply enjoy the freedom of choice by exercising the right to vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next comment, please.
Yes, Madam Vice Mayor, the next one is Mr. Todd Bausma, and he has general comments. Vice Mayor, Mr. Bausma?
Hello, council. My name is Todd Bausma. I’ve lived and worked in the city of Paramount over the last thirty years, and it’s been great to see how our city council has worked together with the city staff and in many other ways, and how the city staff has worked with businesses in the city, and how we’ve worked with the individuals to make our city a better place to live. And I’ve enjoyed that fact of how they’ve worked together with me on many things, and seen how the sheriffs have done in the city of Paramount, making it a better place to live. And I hope and pray that that’ll continue to happen here, and that we’ll figure out how to get through things and work together. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mr. Steve Kacharsnik, and his topic is wasted city meeting time. Mr. Kacharsnik?
And hello, city council.
Hello.
Evening, Steve.
Now, a couple of years ago, at a planning commission meeting, Carlton Forge had a proposal, they wanted a diesel fuel tank. And at that time, there were, a group of teachers came to oppose it, they were worried about particulate matter drifting towards downwind from the plant to their district office and a bunch of schools. They thought, you know, diesels, you know, has a bunch of, is a polluting thing. And there are also noise and fumes, they’re worried about kids with asthma and things like this. Now, they also wanted electric forklifts, but I think it was pointed out, these big forklifts that the plant requires needed the diesel ones, and they were state-of-the-art ones, acceptable to the state’s standards. So needless to say, the measure passed, they got their fuel tank. But I think AMQ, AQMD started looking in a little better, they were already monitoring the city, that’s the job. And about a year after this, they discovered odorless, colorless, tasteless pollutant, hexavalent chromine, and it was detected above acceptable levels. It was a pollutant. I mean, yeah, it’s not supposed to be there. I mean, it’s not like Vernon where they’re covering the ground with lead, but we don’t want it in the city. Okay? Now, all sorts of allegations started being thrown out at the city meetings after that. I heard talks about kickbacks, payoffs, actually insulting, you know, council members and commissioners too. And if any of these things had any merit, I would have assumed that, you know, criminal procedures would have developed by now, at least, but I see most of you are here, I haven’t heard of any councilmen or commissioners being picked up, or anyone in the city government being hauled before justice. Now, these allegations kept coming, I mean, even to this day, you’re being accused of being responsible, like the last speaker, I mean, you’re lax, I mean, you’re not on top of things, you’re allowing this gross polluter to continue spewing toxins. Oh, am I almost done already? And nationally, this seems to be acceptable in most elections now, but basically, I just consider it name-calling, it’s a waste of meeting time, I mean, to have to put up with this. Is that it?
That’s it.
That’s what I’m talking about, I only get three minutes to run my mouth. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any questions, by the way?
No questions, thank you.
Our next speaker, Madam Vice Mayor, is our Paramount librarian, Iris Egan, and she’s here to announce Jackie Ramirez.
Good evening, Vice Mayor Martinez and council members. I just wanted to come before you today and introduce our new children’s librarian, her name is Jackie Ramirez, and she started in October, and we’re very happy to have her. We’re actually super lucky because she was offered several positions within the county, including one that’s closer to her home, and she chose Paramount Library.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Yes, my name is Jackie Ramirez, I’m here to serve you. You can find me at the reference desk, and I’ll also be in charge of planning the children’s and teens programs. I am bilingual, so if there’s anyone in the community that prefers speaking Spanish, I can speak to them in Spanish as well as English. Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie, welcome.
You’re welcome.
Our next speaker, Madam Mayor, is Ms. Stella Ursna, and she wants to discuss solar energy systems for Paramount residents, and she’s with Grid Alternatives.
Good evening, city council members, thank you so much for providing us with the opportunity to share a little bit about our program. We are called Grid Alternatives, Greater Los Angeles. We even, we are an organization that’s been servicing families that are living in environmentally disadvantaged communities, seniors, veterans, folks that are having problems paying their, struggling to make their, pay their energy bills. And we come to you today to ask for your support for our outreach and education efforts. We will be conducting a workshop on December 2nd, and Natalie is going to give you some information here in just a second, that will take place at Progress Park. We would love for you to support this effort. We have, in your little packet there, there’s an impact report, we have installed approximately thirteen hundred and sixty-six solar energy systems for those individuals that I just mentioned. We have saved over four thousand two hundred and, I’m sorry, we have installed four thousand two hundred and thirty-five kilowatts of clean solar power. This might address some of the comments that you’re hearing already. Lifetime savings of thirty-four million nine hundred and eight thousand dollars. We have prevented eighty-nine thousand nine hundred and thirty-eight tons of greenhouse gas emissions because of these solar energy systems. We have trained four thousand eight hundred and eighty-five trainees in the basics of solar education, and we have connected eighty trainees to local solar companies, to unions, and to jobs within our organization as well. We believe this program will help you with your environmental health efforts in the future. There is one page there in your little packet that shows the number of installs that have taken place here in Paramount. I think there’s three or four. We’d like to triple that number, maybe even quadruple it next year. We need your support, though. These are programs, this solar program is at no cost to the family, we receive funds from the Cap and Trade Fund, and we have been installing these systems here, as I mentioned, since, in the greater LA area since 2013. So if you would like more information, we’ll be in the back for a little bit, we have flyers for the workshop that’s taking place on December 2nd. We’d love for you to join us, so you can learn more about our organization, how the program works. And just a real quick, I have fifteen seconds, we’re working very closely with cities throughout greater LA, we have been working with the city of Pomona, for example, we installed over the past two weeks about ten to twelve systems just in Pomona because we’re working closely with the city. We’d like to do the same thing with you. Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming before the city council. And John, is this on our website?
Yes, if it’s not, it will be for the, yes, it is already, okay.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you. Okeydoke. And our next speaker, Vice Mayor, is Ms. Velma Cuellar Stallings, and she has some general comments. Ms. Stallings?
Good evening, everyone, my name is Velma Cuellar Stallings.
Good evening.
I’m a resident of Paramount over fifty-five years, retired from Paramount Unified School District for thirty years. I have a granddaughter in the hospital, so excuse me that I have to use my phone today, I have my notes. So I will greet you. Good evening, city council members. Martinez, Ms. Gillen, Mr. Hoffmeyer, Dr. Hanson. As the Thanksgiving holidays are approaching, I wanted to thank you for the great things that are happening in the city of Paramount for the past thirty-five years. And I’m also very grateful that PUSD and the city of Paramount work well together, and you. Thank you for your dedication, thank you for your leadership, I thank you that I live in a wonderful city, and that my granddaughters are being raised in a wonderful city. I am grateful to my parents for bringing us, bringing myself and my brothers to this great city. God bless America, God bless the city of Paramount, happy Thanksgiving to each and every one of you. Good night.
Thank you, happy Thanksgiving to you as well. Thank you.
Our last speaker, Madam Vice Mayor, is Ms. Margaret Garcia, and she wants to speak just in general of Paramount City. Ms. Garcia?
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Margaret Garcia, I have lived in Paramount almost all my life. I am a product of Paramount Unified School Districts. I not only live in Paramount, but I also work in Paramount. I’m here to say that I still believe in our slogan, Positively Paramount. In the past ten years, we have seen so many positive changes in our city. I enjoy being able to take my children to Jamba Juice, Yar Gerland, IHF, and for Norchata without leaving my city. It’s all thanks to the council working together along with the Chamber of Commerce, which is not a negative thing, like some people portray it to be. Also, our streets are looking better than ever, we now have a downtown Paramount that looks great. Paramount has its own substation, which cuts down response time in our city. Our parks have now exercise equipment for the residents to use. There are so many positive things happening in our city that would take me more than three minutes to list them all. And yes, the air issue has been an important issue. I do believe that the city and the QMD, which is a government agency, are working together to fix it. Many people have seemed to forgotten, and would like others to forget, that Paramount still continues to be a great city to live in. I acknowledge that the air quality issue is a bad chapter in Paramount’s history, but Paramount continues to be a great book. I would like Councilmember Gillen to start being positive about her own city she represents. I know she is very passionate about the air quality in her city. We all saw that last Christmas, as her and her supporters followed the Christmas train around the city, holding signs that read “To Throw in the Poisonous Apples Back,” and the city was killing us all. She almost ruined Christmas for the children of Paramount. My question is, will Councilmember Gillen be riding the Christmas train this year, waving and handing out poisonous apples? This will be her opportunity to show some integrity and how strong and committed she is to her issues of air quality, or will she simply forget about it and ride the train this year? I think I already know the answer to this. I got the answer last week, as she sat at the senior’s Thanksgiving dinner and enjoyed a free meal that was sponsored by Weber Meadows. What, maybe? Yeah. Maybe you didn’t know, or simply just didn’t care. So it’s a lack of education and integrity. Either way, she didn’t make the right choice. Thank you.
Any other comments, Mr. Ramirez?
No, Madam Vice Mayor, that’s it.
Okay, we have item two, consent calendar, we have a motion, may we, and I have a second, may I have a roll call, please? Mr. Cummings?
Councilmember Gillan.
The consent calendar, Ms. Gillen.
Councilmember Hanson.
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Martinez.
Yes. Item two, award of contract, Vision Website Development and Maintenance, may I have a staff report, please?
Yes, Madam Vice Mayor and Council. A city’s website, as we all know, is the most critical tool for sharing information with residents and businesses on a more comprehensive basis. As you had just mentioned, you want this posted, definitely, we will get that posted if it’s not already up there. Paramount’s website is around fifteen years old and is in great need of a remodel. This point was also mentioned in a communications study that the city commissioned last year. Funds were approved by the city council in June with the adoption of the budget to redo our website, and we went out to bid for this project, and Kevin will tell you the outcome. Kevin?
Yes, thank you, John. Good evening, Vice Mayor and city council members. This item is to consider an award of contract for development of a new website and for annual maintenance costs over a five-year period. Our current website has been, for the most part, in its current form since the early 2000s. While it’s done well for the city to provide information to residents over the years, it’s been out of date for a number of years now. Most notably, the website is not optimized for mobile devices like smartphones or tablets. In other words, our website doesn’t reformat itself to make it user-friendly on mobile devices. Since most people access information from smaller, non-workstation-type devices, this was one of the most critical factors for redoing the city website. And this is a screenshot of our current website homepage, and as you can see, the website does offer a lot of information to the public, including information about the city council, city departments, upcoming events, and various city documents. However, it lacks a modern design, organization of information, and aesthetic appeal as compared with more contemporary websites. In addition, another major deficiency beyond the lack of user-friendliness to the end-user is the difficulty for staff to update website content. In many cases, staff simply cannot make edits and immediately post those changes for the public to see. Staff often has to rely on High Point to make those changes, which sometimes causes a delay of a day or more. Our need for a new website was reinforced by our communications consultant, Trepepi Smith and Associates, in the communications assessment report they prepared for us in 2016. In the report, Trepepi Smith said that the website needs to be replaced as it’s the core repository of city information and should be the go-to communications channel for Paramount. As a result, during the fiscal year 18 budget process, staff requested and the city council approved thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars for website development and current hosting. Of this amount, twenty-five thousand dollars was intended for the development of a new website. Following the budget’s approval, staff sent out RFPs to various website companies in August. The city then received proposals from five website companies. All five companies were interviewed by a panel of city staff members, and based on the proposals, interviews, and cost, staff selected the company called Vision. Vision has extensive experience in developing websites in cities in Southern California and across the state. Their websites, as you’ll see, are very attractive and project a sense of modernity and user-friendliness. In addition, their cost for development and annual maintenance was very competitive, and they offer a website refresh after three years to help keep the website updated. And just for visual contrast, here again is the city’s current website homepage. And now, these are just a few websites Vision has created in other nearby cities. And just a little more about what Vision will provide, they’ll provide a study to understand which current website pages are the most visited, easy content management tools for staff, training for staff, availability of an account representative for website review purposes, website redesign and other services, and hosting with a ninety-nine point ninety-nine percent uptime standard, which means, over the course of a year’s time, there’s almost no downtime or time when the website isn’t functioning. Staffers requesting approval of a five-year contract with Vision. The cost for website development and maintenance is twenty-four thousand dollars in the first year. Thereafter, over the next four years, the annual maintenance costs will be a total of twenty-nine thousand two hundred and eighty-five dollars. And so for the entire five-year contract period, the total cost will be fifty-three thousand two hundred and eighty-five dollars. So with that, staff asks your approval of this contract with Vision, and if you have any questions, I’ll be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Are there any questions for Kevin? May I have a motion, please?
Move the item. Second.
A roll call, please.
Councilmember Gillan. Councilmember Hanson.
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Martinez.
Yes. Item three, ordinance number ten ninety-two, may I have a staff report, please?
Yes, Madam Vice Mayor and Council. As you know, state law requires cities with low voter turnout to move their municipal elections to even-numbered years, and that’s to coincide with either the statewide primary or the statewide general election. Like many other cities in California, Paramount has always held election in odd, elections, excuse me, in odd-numbered years, so we need to move our election date to comply with state law. Cities are required to adopt an ordinance that lays out their plan for moving their elections to even-numbered years, and cities are required to submit this plan to the county Board of Supervisors by January 1st of 2018. So before you tonight are three options for holding the next municipal election, November 2018, March 2019, or March 2020. So we are looking for the council to select a date so that we can move forward with this to the county. Lana is going to handle the item, our city clerk, and just as a reminder, Vice Mayor, we do have some speaker cards on this item.
Okay, so after the PowerPoint presentation, I’ll welcome the comments.
Madam Vice Mayor and council members, Senate Bill 415, the Voter Participation Act, was signed into law on September 1st, 2015, and mandates that cities with low voter turnouts must move their elections to a statewide election date. The goal of SB 415 is to address declining voter turnout and that the synchronizing of municipal elections with statewide elections would increase voter participation. Paramount’s average voter turnout for its past four municipal elections was nine point four seven percent. Pursuant to SB 415, the minimum average voter turnout for Paramount to continue to have standalone elections and not move to statewide election date is thirty-four point seven three percent. Because the city’s past average voter turnout is less than thirty-four point seven three percent, Paramount has a significant decrease in voter turnout and must move its election to a statewide election date. To change Paramount’s election date to a statewide election date, the city must adopt a transition plan. The purpose of the transition plan to be enacted by the adoption of a city ordinance is to synchronize the city’s election with a statewide election date as early as November 2018, but no later than November 8th, 2022. Statewide election dates have been held in June and November of even-numbered years. The transition plan must be submitted to the LA County Board of Supervisors by January 1st, 2018, and it will become operative upon the Board of Supervisors’ approval. Senate Bill 568 was recently signed into law on September 27th, 2017, which provides a March election date option for cities. SB 568 now changes the statewide primary election from June to March. And effective January 1st, 2019, statewide elections will be held in November and March of even-numbered years. There will be a statewide primary election on March 3rd, 2020. In order to accommodate the transition to a statewide election date, cities may be required to increase terms of office of its council members. According to state law, no term of office shall be increased or decreased by more than twelve months. Moving the city’s election date to March or November complies with state law. A November 2018 election would decrease council member terms by four months, and a March 2020 election will increase council member terms by twelve months. There are three options for city council’s consideration to modify the city’s general municipal election to comply with SB 415, or optionally SB 568. Option one is to adopt a plan to begin consolidating the city’s election with the November 2018 statewide general election. Option two is to adopt a plan to begin consolidating the city’s election with the March 2020 statewide primary election. And option three would be to have a city standalone election on March 5th, 2019, and adopt a plan to begin consolidating the city’s election with a statewide primary election beginning March 2022. Here are some details regarding the three election dates. With regard to voter turnout in Paramount, November statewide general elections have the highest voter turnout, followed by statewide primary elections, and then city standalone elections. The city has received cost estimates from the County Register Recorder’s Office, the estimated cost to consolidate with the county for a November 6th, 2018 election is forty-two thousand. The Register Recorder cannot provide us with an estimate for the March 3rd, 2020 statewide primary election because the county plans to transition to a new voting model in 2020. However, the Register Recorder did conduct the city’s March 2017 election, and the city’s cost was thirty thousand. The estimated cost for the Register Recorder to conduct a March 5th, 2019 standalone election is three hundred and twenty-six thousand. Now, it should be noted, the city conducted standalone elections in 2015, 2009, and 2007 using Martin &amp; Chapman, an election supplier and consultant. Martin &amp; Chapman has indicated to us that they anticipate being in business in March 2019, but their business has been impacted due to the loss of cities moving to statewide election dates, and we have no guarantee that they will be operating in 2019. It is possible that the Register Recorder may be the city’s only option for a March 2019 election. And under option one, there are forty-six schedules, forty-six cities scheduled to synchronize their elections with November statewide general elections, plus the Paramount Unified School District. Ten cities are under option two, and they are scheduled to synchronize their elections with March statewide primary elections. And under option three, there are zero. The Register Recorder has not received any requests to run March 2019 city standalone elections. Additionally, there are thirty-two cities who still have not moved their elections to a statewide election date. Prior to the passage of SB 415, nine cities were already on a November even-numbered year election date. Twenty-six cities moved their elections to a November statewide general election date to comply with SB 415. This move was prior to the passage of SB 568. This move was prior to the passage of SB 568, which allows cities to move to a March statewide primary election date. And it is possible that there could be movement by some of these cities to March statewide primary elections. And there are 11 cities, following the passage of SB 568, that have moved their elections to a November statewide general election date. Following the passage of SB 568, 10 cities plan to hold their elections on a March statewide primary election date. And as mentioned previously, 32 cities are undecided and have not moved their election to consolidate with either a November or March statewide election. As mentioned earlier, terms of office may be affected depending on the election date. And the nomination period for a November election will be during July and August, and the nomination period for a March election will be during November and December. Three ordinances have been prepared for city council's consideration. The first ordinance establishes a November 2018 election date to be consolidated with a statewide general election. The second ordinance establishes a March 2020 election date to be consolidated with a statewide primary election. And the third ordinance establishes moving to the March 2022 statewide primary election following a March 2019 standalone election. Staff is seeking direction from the city council, and it is recommended that the city council consider the election date options and select a future election date, introduce ordinance number 1092 to include the selected election date, and place it on the next regular agenda for adoption. Direct the elections official to submit the adopted ordinance number 1092 to the LA County Register Recorder's Office and the Board of Supervisors for approval to synchronize the city's election with a statewide election. And lastly, cause a notice to be mailed to all registered voters. A notice must be mailed within 30 days after the city's ordinance becomes operative to all registered voters of the city to inform voters of the election date change and that the terms of office of elected city officeholders will change. This concludes my report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Conny? At this time, I'll entertain public comments.
Yes, Madam Mayor. The first one that we have is from Mr. Jim Hyde. Mr. Hyde, would you like to address the council?
Good evening, councilmembers. I'm a resident of Paramount for over 50 years. I am in favor of option number two, and I'll tell you why. I believe that's going to coincide with the presidential primary. That's why the state moved their primary from June to March. There'll be a lot more activity politically, get people motivated to come out to the polls, and I believe that would be our best suggestion for our council to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker's card, Madam Vice Mayor, is from Mr. Lloyd Eichardt.
Good evening, members of the council.
Good evening.
I'm just going to give you a little chronology. I moved to Paramount in 1963. Paramount was a mud hole. Mac McEwen ran the city. He ran the city council, and nothing could be done without going through Mac. And it was a problem. So in 1966, I was elected to the city council, and I had a plan for the community. It wasn't -- Mac kept telling me it was going to continue to be a mud hole. I had a plan for the community. Number one, I wanted to have safe parks within walking distance of everybody in the community. That happened today, that every house has a park within walking distance. How that came about was I was asked to join the J.C.'s in Lakewood, but I said, "Why'd have Lakewood J.C.'s when we could have Paramount J.C.?" So Dan Chumley, who was chamber manager at Community Savins, and I put together Paramount J.C.'s. We had over 50 members, and a lot of them were in the construction business. We built the first park in the city of Paramount at the corner of Downey and Madison. The city council was against it. Louis Spanney said, "We don't want any more parks in this community." And ironically, they named a park after him. The second thing that we started was a tree planting program. We got 100 trees donated by Catano's Nursery, and we planted them on Downey Avenue and started planting them on Paramount Boulevard. Again, at that time, the council was against it. They said, "We're going to pull up the sidewalks." So we did things to keep that from happening, and we continued with the tree planting program, and that's where you got your trees today and why Paramount is a tree city. To go on, one of the things that Paramount needed was a hospital. I was a real estate broker, and I put together a plan, 10 doctors, and we built Paramount General Hospital across the street here. So we needed a hospital in the community. We got a hospital. Santa Claus, well, that was kind of a fun thing. I was the first Santa Claus. And while that happened, was I had a little Santa Claus in front of my real estate office. But whenever we got the new city manager in, after we got rid of McEwen, we decided instead of just having it in one place, we'd take it out to the community, and that's where your Santa Claus program came from today. So we've got Santa all over, and I understand you're doing, what, 40,000 apples now? We did 4,000.
Oh.
Carrying on, 1968, I was on the council in '66.
Ten seconds, Mr. Eichardt.
And I couldn't get a second to a motion to adjourn. So I elected John Meese and Ted Moser, and the one thing that the city manager told me when I first went up --
There it is.
May I continue? Oh. The one thing that the city manager, McEwen, told me, he says, "When I first got on the council --"
Okay, Mr. Eichardt.
He says, "You gotta learn to count to three." So, may I continue? I just --
You may not, sorry. Thank you so much for coming before the council.
All right, let me just conclude, then. I want to see this community, you know, continue in the way that it's going right now. Honesty, integrity, and respect for all of the citizens.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Lloyd.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Eichardt.
Sorry, bud.
Okay, our next comment, please.
Yes, Madam Vice Mayor, the next one is from Ms. Eileen Apparicio.
Hi, good evening. My name is Eileen Apparicio, and I've lived here, oh, more years than I would care to admit to right now. I'm speaking in favor of option two on this agenda item. I've always enjoyed the great cooperation between the school district and the city, as mentioned by other speakers, and being an employee of the school district, it's a pleasure to see that continuing. I'm also pretty fiscally conservative, and it seems to me that option two would be the most fiscally conservative option for our city, especially if it pans out to the price that I heard Mr. Conny mention, which I know was not guaranteed, but was a possibility. I think that the city's very well financially managed, and because of that, you're able to provide good services to all the people who live here and programs that we all benefit from. So I'm hoping that option two will be selected, just simply from a fiscal standpoint, as enabling you to continue the good financial management you've had so far. That provides us with the services we receive. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker's card, Madam Vice Mayor, is from Ms. Brenda Olmos.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and councilmembers. I hope you guys are having a good evening. I would like to speak to you tonight regarding your decision for the upcoming election cycle. I've spent a lot of time listening to public comments on this issue, as well as speaking with members of the community and other leaders in other cities. I want to let you know that whatever decision you make needs to be the best instance for our city, and we hope that you guys make that good decision tonight. I myself will be running for city council in the next election, whether it's in 2018 or 2020. I've heard that there'll be a recall effort if you choose to hold elections in 2020, and I just want to say, as many others in this room tonight, we will not support any actions that would further divide our city. It strikes me odd that ones that may be asking for a recall had your campaign signs in their lawns in the past. It has been said, "We haven't had elections in 10 years." This statement is simply not true. We have elections every two years, just like every other city. What we do not have for eight years was a challenger to the incumbents. If anyone wanted to run in those two election cycles, I'd had every right and every opportunity to do so. I'm extremely proud of our city and all of the amazing changes that have taken place, and I'm perfectly aware that those changes are because we elected good leaders. Every time I read about city councilmembers who are going to jail for corruption, or a city is filing bankruptcy, or I drive through a city covered in graffiti and filed with decay, I feel fortunate that we have city people that care. I've spent years going to city council meetings and serving as a commissioner, and because of that, I know that there are many sides to every issue, and it's extremely important that you take the time to do your homework and make sure that you're making informed decisions and not based on internet gossip. Thank you for your time and your service.
Thank you.
Our next speaker, Madam Vice Mayor, is Mr. Alan Gomez.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. Hope you guys are all having a good evening. First and foremost, before I begin my -- should we read my comments first, and I'll have another comment. I first addressed the city council on October 3rd and again on November 7th regarding SB 415 and SB 568. Tonight is a very important night in the city of Paramount, as the council will decide the future of how our city will be governed. For too many years, our city has held elections in March of odd years, which has historically led to low voter turnout. Low voter turnout created a situation where the will of the people is decided by a small group of residents. A city of 55,000 people cannot be effectively governed with only 5% of residents voting. Our state legislature and governor realize the importance of increasing voter participation, and is why they signed the two bills into law. Cities across the county have moved the election to November 2018, the most recent being Claremont. By doing so, it will effectively raise Paramount's voting participation to over 50% if we move it to November 2018. November 2018 is a significant election year. Thousands of Paramount residents will head to the voting booth to vote for governor, U.S. Senator, Congress, and PUSD School Board. The residents of this city should not be denied the right to vote in November 2018 for the next councilmembers, which may be you guys again, which is okay. Given the sentiment in the community, if the election is moved to 2020 and council terms are extended by one year, it will call into question the ability of this council to govern on behalf of the residents of Paramount. I urge each and every one of you to do what is right and respect the will of the people and vote in favor of moving the election to 2018. That's my comment on the election. I want to move it to 2018. I still have a minute. I know the city adopted rules of decorum, which I think are great, you know, gives everybody a level playing field. What I don't like in my comments, I do not name individual city councilmember, because I may agree to disagree with all of you guys on certain issues, but I still respect you guys as individual citizens. See you at Riot Aid, at the grocery store I've known there for many years, Tom Hanson for many years, Ms. Martinez. But never do I get up here and disrespect an individual councilmember, because I think that is disrespectful. You know, like I said, I may agree to disagree, but I have to have some level of respect of your seat in power, and I really, really get upset when I follow the rules of decorum and the city manager, city attorney, and assistant city manager, and everyone in charge does not call or stop the meeting and tell --
Thirty seconds.
-- speakers, "Please hold on. You cannot call out an individual city councilmember," because if that were me up there, I would not want to be disrespected, because I do believe in the democratic process. It's a government for the people, by the people should never perish. And that's just -- I'm a little more upset about the comments tonight about someone calling out an individual councilmember, because I never do that, because I have respect for all of you. So, thank you very much. That's all I had to say tonight.
Thank you.
Madam Vice Mayor, next speaker is Ms. Linda Chaparral Martin. Ms. Chaparral Martin?
Well, I had a very, pardon me, simple question. And after the presentation regarding the different options, the bill was passed to increase voter participation, correct? Correct. And, correct me if I'm wrong, on the screen, it was showing that if we held the election in 2018, the voter turnout would be 46%, as opposed to 2020, 16%? Am I correct? So I am in favor of having the election November 2018. I would love to see more people come out and exercise their right to vote. So please, sometimes it's not always about money. And the other thing they said about money, on 2020, it said not available, and 2017, $30,000, and for 2018, it said $42,000? So it isn't that much more. I'd rather see the voters come out than money. Money isn't always the answer. And also, I would like to comment, I don't always agree with all of you, like this gentleman said, but I respect all of you and your title. And I do not appreciate people coming out here and pointing fingers. It's disrespectful. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all the speaker's card.
Thank you. Okay, that's it. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I have a question first, if I could.
Yes, you may.
Vice Mayor.
Dr. Hanson.
To increase the voter turnout, the state has moved the June elections to March, correct?
Correct.
Actually.
Correct.
Yes, well, for two reasons.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, Councilmember Hanson, the other is to be more relevant in the primary for the presidential election on a national basis.
That's where I was coming to.
There you go.
Would it -- well, this is an opinion, so it doesn't really matter, I guess, but I would assume that the 16.69% for the previous June elections, being that those are going to move to March, I would think it would come out and be comparable to the general election that's held in November. So that percentage should increase, especially in presidential elections, I would assume. I mean, this is an opinion, I guess, but that would be my opinion, anyway.
And that's what it is. It's an opinion. It's a speculation. But if you look at the past percentages, which are fact, based on the past pattern of voting, these are issues that we know firsthand, that we don't have to assume or suspect or guess or think that that could possibly happen. If you look at the past stats, it tells you exactly what has happened.
And the past stats states that whenever there's a presidential election, historically, that's a higher voter turnout. And then second, followed by a primary election. So if the primary election is going to be held in March 2020, we're going to have a more voter turnout as if we had it in November 2018, because November 2018 is a statewide general election, where the March 2020 is going to be the presidential primary election. And in the history, the people come out for the presidential, to vote for presidents or the primary. So we'll have a higher turnout if we have it in March 2020, and the goal of 568 and 415 was to increase the voter turnout. So if we are in favor, we move it to March 2020, we're going to have more of our residents coming out to vote, as opposed to the November 2018. Any other comments from my colleagues?
Yeah, I have another comment. The school board has already moved it up to November of 18, and I think it's a good idea to ask the community to go out once to vote for both the school board and the city council, increasing voter turnout, abiding by the intent of the legislation of SB 415. I don't know why we need to look at, perhaps if we change it to this day, we'll increase it maybe, because if you think about it, blah, blah, blah. The fact is, SB 14 was supposed to get -- it was passed so that voters would get out to vote, and that's coming up, and it's only moving up your term four months, as opposed to pushing the envelope to the 12 months, which is the limit line, which it's not supposed to go over, and you're right at 12 months. Four months is very insignificant when you've been in office 24 years or 20 years. It's only four months. And if we're talking about facts, the voter turnout will be higher in November of 18, because people are already going out to vote for school board here in the city.
Okay. How many comments? Okay, I make a motion to move the city elections to March 2020, and this would be in compliance with the state law under Governor Jerry Brown.
Don't do it.
Do I have a second?
And Madam Vice Jerry, again, your motion would include the four requisites that the city clerk did, right?
Correct. Do I have a second?
Again.
May I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Ginn?
No.
Councilmember Hanson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Martinez?
Yes. Okay, item three, pardon me, item for award of contract. May I have a staff report, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor and the council. At the adoption, Madam Vice Mayor, excuse me, at the adoption of the FY 2018 budget, we discussed with the city council the development of a personnel classification and compensation study. This study is very commonly performed among cities, but has never been done in Paramount. This study would really give us a clear picture of how we look when comparing ourselves with similar surrounding cities when it comes to job duties and things like pay and benefits. This, in turn, will help us to stay competitive when retaining and recruiting our employees. So with that, I'll turn it over to our Assistant City Manager, Kevin Chun, to handle the item. Kevin?
Thank you, John. Again, Vice Mayor and City Council members, good evening. This item is an award of contract for a classification and compensation or class and comp study. As an overview, class and comp studies are analyses that help cities ensure that employees or groups of employees are classified appropriately for the work that they are performing, and that employees are being compensated appropriately through a pay and benefits strategy. As mentioned in the report, the city has never commissioned a formal class and comp study and has gotten by over the years with making informal adjustments to its personnel system. Over time, however, such informal actions can lead to situations where groups or classes of employees become misaligned as compared with other classes within the organization and also outside of the organization in terms of job duties, titles, and compensation. To prevent these types of issues from becoming significant problems, staff recommended a full-fledged class and comp study, and the city council approved an allocation of $35,000 for this purpose in the FY 18 budget. Staff then prepared and sent out an RFP in August and received three proposals from various HR firms. Based on interviews with these firms, cost proposals, and the timing for their work, staff selected the firm of CPS HR Consulting at a cost of $44,870. The timing was a significant consideration, as some of the findings from the study may also be incorporated in the upcoming FY 18, excuse me, 19 budget. It should be noted that CPS HR's cost proposal is $9,870 above staff's budget estimate, and an adjustment for this difference will have to be made with the mid-year budget process. CPS HR was also selected as it performs this type of work exclusively for public agencies and nonprofit organizations, including several agencies in Southern California. With a class and comp study, obviously, there are two components: classification, which is to be performed first, and then compensation. For the classification portion, CPS HR will review the city's entire personnel system, groups, and individual classifications to make sure they are appropriate for the work being performed, as well as in alignment with each class within the system hierarchy. This analysis will then be used for developing a strategy for employee compensation. The compensation study then gathers data about certain job classifications from a list of comparable area cities, and develops total compensation recommendation that includes salary and benefits, such as health insurance, retirement, vacation, holidays, et cetera. The overall study process will be very interactive with employees, supervisors, and executive management, and the city council, from information gathering through implementation phases. Staff's goal for the class and comp study are to help better organize the personnel system, set an implementation strategy for total compensation, and to be able to more effectively retain and attract employees. So with that, staff asks your approval of this item, and if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. Also, Bruce Davis from CPS HR is also here and can provide any other information you may need. Thank you.
Any, pardon me, any questions for Kevin? May I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to award the service contract to CPS HR.
I'll second that.
Roll call, please?
Councilmember Ginn?
I'm going to abstain.
Councilmember Hanson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Martinez?
Yes. Are there any comments from staff?
Just on behalf of the city staff, I wish you and your family a very happy Thanksgiving, and I hope you all enjoyed yourselves at the senior Thanksgiving.
Any comments from council members?
I do. I find it very funny that we went through rules of decorum, and we instilled the rules of decorum, and the whole commission was there, and everybody said we've never had to have rules of decorum, but because community was talking about certain individuals, there was a whole uproar. Now we have rules of decorum, and your first opportunity to stop somebody who was addressing it to a certain individual, maybe because it was me, you chose not to do it. Something to think about.
Any other comments from council members?
I just want to wish everybody a blessed Thanksgiving, and as we get ready for these holidays, I just hope that this is a community that can get together.
Happy Thanksgiving to everyone here.
And I just want to commend David Johnson and his staff for a wonderful, wonderful Thanksgiving dinner. Our seniors enjoyed themselves. They were dancing from corner to corner. It was really a nice, beautiful community event. Thank you so much, David, under your leadership, and I'd like to wish each and every one of you a blessed, blessed Thanksgiving. God bless each and every one of you.
Thanks for the free meal, David. I appreciate it.
Okay, enjoy. I adjourn this meeting.